Thank you. Welcome to our Hart public hearing on the budget. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome. I call the public hearing to order. I hereby open the public hearing this evening on the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate and annual budget for Hillsborough Transit Authority. Anyone who may wish to speak this evening will need to sign in and identify themselves. On the table at the back of the room, we have made available to you documents summarizing the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate and annual budget. These documents include the agenda for tonight's public hearing, which I will now outline. We will consider the adoption of the following resolutions. A resolution to adopt the levying of tentative ad valorem taxes and the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate. After hearing citizen comments, the board may make any changes it deems appropriate to the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate. A resolution adopting the tentative fiscal year 2015 annual budget. After hearing citizen comments, the board may take, may make any changes it deems appropriate to the tentative fiscal year 2015 annual budget. Each part of the hearing will be conducted as follows. Hart finance staff will read the title of the resolutions on which specific action is needed. The board will then open the public hearing for citizen comments. In order to expedite hearing from everyone who wishes to speak, speaker comments are limited to three minutes. After citizen comments, the board will then take action to move for approval of any changes and then move for approval of the required resolutions adopting the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate and annual budget. Prior to our discussion on the resolutions, staff will provide a brief presentation on the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate and annual budget. Jeff, if you could give us our, we have, I think we need to call for the meeting to be, to open, but I think I already did that, so. Jeff, please continue.
Good evening. Jeff Seward, Chief Financial Officer for Hart. Tonight I'll give you a high-level overview of the proposed FY '15 operating and capital budgets. We have had the preparation of this budget and numerous presentations to committees and to the board since May, and tonight is the culmination of that work. So as always, each year, we have specific guidance provided to us by the CEO on specific goals for the next year's budget. The key goals for this year, again, were to maintain our current service levels, provide enhancements to select routes and service pursuant to our annual transit development plan, a continued look at our long-term fiscal sustainability as a public agency. We want to look at ways to migrate from our reliance on federal formula funding on our operating side into the future. We want to prepare Hart for future growth and continue to prepare Hart for those discussions as they mature in the community. And we wanted a budget that focused on three succinct areas. One is making Hart an employer of choice, reinvestment of new revenues and additional revenues that Hart receives, and forward-thinking programs, putting ourselves out in front of the other agencies in the transit world, being progressive and allowing more technology to go to our patrons. Balancing needs with revenues. The following budget that you are going to review tonight for tentative approval has the following key elements. Again, it maintains current bus and paratransit service levels. It shows a savings of over $1.1 million of internal cost savings through our level of service process that Hart staff initiates each year. We are adding over 19,000 hours of service to five routes, which equates to 2.3 increase in service for next year. That's the second consecutive year of enhancements. We have also included bargaining step increases and performance bonuses for the ATU. We have included a non-bargaining cost of living adjustment. We've added 18.7 FTEs to our budget for next year to help with increased operational service levels and additional support and workload issues. We have anticipated a 12% increase in necessary claims activity for next year for our health care. This budget does have the levels of funding necessary to deal with those. And then we've added a few special projects as we did last year, keeping in the spirit of those three areas of emphasis that I mentioned on the prior slide. Our CNG operations and maintenance, this is the first full year that we will be in CNG operating mode. We will start receiving buses in the spring, so we have an O&amp;M contract going in place for that. Our One Bus Away maintenance and support is now moving to the maintenance and support phase. That needs to be funded. A decision was made to televise all Board of Director meetings. That was budgeted for next year as well. A bus rodeo, upgrades to our operator training manuals, which has not happened for a number of years, improvements for operator and staff recruitment to curb attrition, and improvements for customer service and van operations. And again, one of the most important lines here is no use of fund balance going into the next year. So the proposed operating and capital budget for next year is balanced at $83,898,391 for fiscal year '15. That's 3.1% less than the amended operating budget that we are currently in in FY '14. The proposed operating budget is $65.8 million, which is $2.1 million higher than the current year. And then our proposed capital budget is $4.7 million less than our current year. An overview of our operating revenues. This year, for FY '14, we have projected $875,000 to be dropped to the bottom line when books close in another 55 days. We are anticipating for next year and FY '15 that we will drop $1.13 million to the bottom line, enhancing the current fund balance that Hart has in place. Our milage history, tonight's tentative milage that you will be considering, is in line with the last three years of milage at the maximum charter of .5 mils. Our operating expenditure overview. Again, the majority of Hart's operating expenses goes to employee costs, personnel costs such as salaries and fringes and associated activities. Fuels, materials, and supplies is $11 million. We feel very comfortable with our fuel contract that we have in place. We have now locked the entire year of fiscal year '15 at below budget for '15. So we are anticipating some very good cost savings over the next year in our fuels Five-year look ahead. You're familiar with this chart of how we look out strategically for our financial plan over the next five years. This does take into account the transit development plan as far as the status quo enhancements are concerned for the next five years. It also includes all of the status quo changes or tweaks that are provided in this year's transit development plan update. So again, this year in FY '14, we're looking at 836, it's going to go up a little bit. And for '15, the budget that you are reviewing tonight, $1.03, $1.3 million, looking at dropping to the bottom line. Capital expenditure revenue overview. Again, this year's capital budget is $4.7 million less than the prior year. This is the smallest capital budget that Hart has had in the last six years, primarily due to the fact that we used up our CIT funding from the county and provided funding back to the county in the range of $9 million. So the funding that we have this year for capital is primarily being used in our vehicle replacement and maintenance program. This is an overview of our proposed capital budget. It's in the packet with line item detail. I'll draw your attention to a couple of specific projects. One is the bus service life extension program. That was instituted this year to maintain the life of our fleet assets that are past their useful life. As you know, our fleet replacement program is in the red in the next five, 10, 15 years. To be able to mitigate those financial issues, we are looking at building a program in place that will extend the life of our assets past their useful life by replacing engines and transmissions to keep them on the road. The fare collection system, again, we have received additional funding through TIBARDA for this component of the project. We are now looking at over $3 million of funding that we have received to date for the new regional fare collection system that will be moving forward next year. And we've also talked about early in the budget process where the capital program was going to be more internally focused, looking at extending the assets that we have now until additional revenues could be found to implement those types of projects. Specifically, we're looking at renovating our roofs, renovating some of our facilities, the heavy maintenance building. We have a federal grant to make that ADA compliant, as well as, I mentioned, our new roofs, which we are installing. So again, those are just some key projects that we have moving forward next year. They are detailed in your packet. So the CEO recommended proposed 2015 budget, operating expenditures of $65.8 million, capital expenditures of $18.084, estimate of over $1 million of additional revenue being able to be dropped to the bottom line at the end of next year, and specifically, again, over $1.1 million of internal cost savings, adding 19,000 hours of service, addresses our employee needs for both collective and non-collective bargaining personnel, funding of new positions for workload issues and constraints, and needed special projects for the organization. And again, the budget is made with an eye to the future, with continued look and building our fiscal sustainability. Our next steps, our second public hearing is September 22nd, and on October the 1st, we will start the process anew, again, for FY 2016. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Jeff. As required by state statutes, we will now discuss the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate and annual budget. Any questions of staff right now? I see no one. Go ahead, Jeff.
This is the first required public hearing on the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate and annual budget, as indicated by the trim notices previously mailed to all taxpayers. The tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate of .5 mils is the same as the adopted fiscal year 2014 milage rate of .5 mils. The tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate is 5.24% more than the rollback rate of .4751 mils. The tentative fiscal year 2015 annual budget is $83,898,391, which represents a decrease of 3.1% under the amended fiscal year 2014 annual budget. The tentative fiscal year 2015 budget consists of the following components. Bus operations, $59,116,372. Paratransit operations, $5,219,356. Streetcar operations, $1,477,849. Total tentative operating budget, $65,813,577. Total tentative capital budget of $18,084,814, with a total tentative annual budget amount of $83,898,391. The tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate and annual budget were subjects of board and committee meetings conducted May through August of 2014. The tentative fiscal year 2015 not to exceed milage rate was provided to the property appraiser on July 29th, 2014, in conformance with state law and set at the July 21st, 2014 board meeting.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there any questions on staff before we proceed? Okay, I see no one. If not, we'll take public comments regarding the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate and annual budget. We have one person listed on here. Anyone else that wishes to speak, please go to the back where our clerk is there to take down your name and be able to go forward. The first speaker we have is Mr. Pierre Matherin. Sir, welcome back.
Good afternoon. Yes, another year. Good afternoon. I am Pierre Matherin, 3409 West Carracus, Tampa, Florida, 23614. Another year, another fiscal year budget hearing, and once again, I urge the Board of Directors to adopt both FY 2015 budget resolutions. While the proposed fiscal year 2015 budget represents a continuation of the status quo with just a slight increase, less than 3% in revenue service hours, this budget only represents a fraction of what is needed by our community. It is my sincerest hope that by the end of this decade, Hart will have the necessary funding to meet the transit needs of our community in terms of both quantity and quality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matherin. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak at this moment concerning the budget? I see no one. I'll close this portion of the public hearing, open the floor to board discussion. Anyone on the board have any questions of staff or any other comments about the budget? All right, Jeff, I don't see any board reaction. Go ahead.
We will now take a vote on the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate and annual budget. The resolution reads as follows. Resolution number R 2014-09-36. A resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the levying of tentative ad valorem taxes, adopting the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate of .5, and providing for an effective date. Whereas, the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, held a public hearing as required by Florida statute 200.065. And whereas, the gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempt from taxation within Hillsborough County has been certified by the county property appraiser to the Hillsborough Transit Authority as $67,397,116. And whereas, the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, set forth to adopt the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate of .5 mils following a public hearing as required by Florida statute 200.065. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough Transit Authority that Section 1 adopt the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate of .5 mils, which is more than the rollback rate of .4751 mils by 5.24%. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. Resolution number R 2014-09-37. A resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the tentative fiscal year 2015 annual budget and providing for an effective date. Whereas, the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, held a public hearing as required by Florida statute 200.065. And whereas, the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, set forth the appropriations and revenue estimate for the tentative fiscal year 2015 annual budget in the amount of $83,898,391. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough Transit Authority that Section 1 adopt the tentative fiscal year 2015 annual budget of $83,898,391. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there any motions to amend the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate or to amend the tentative fiscal year 2015 annual budget by any of our members? I see no one. State statute requires that we approve the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate before we approve the tentative fiscal year 2015 annual budget. Accordingly, we will vote on the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate resolution first. Do I have a motion to approve the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate as presented in Resolution R 2014-09-36? Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. In addition, we need to move to adopt the tentative fiscal year 2015 annual budget as presented in Resolution R 2014-09-37. Do I have a motion? Second? Second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. In compliance with Florida statutes, a public hearing has been held on September 8th, 2014, for the purpose of considering the tentative fiscal year 2015 milage rate necessary to fund the tentative fiscal year 2015 annual budget. This concludes the budget public hearing component of tonight's meeting. The final public hearing is scheduled for Monday, September 22nd, 2014, at 5:30 PM here at the Hart administrative offices in Ebor City. Now, to begin our regular Board of Directors meeting, I need an approval of the minutes from our last meeting on August 4th of 2014. Second? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Is there anyone? I think we have a list of someone that wants to speak. We're going to public input right now. And, it's a name that I just said a moment ago. Pierre Matherin, sir, if you could come back up again.
My name is Pierre Matherin, 3409 West Carracus, Tampa, Florida. Regarding Resolution 2014-04-39, while keeping fare stable is commendable, I want to remind all that this is possible if federal funding is stable, if state funding is stable, and if Hart's property tax funding structure is left unchanged by state legislators in Tallahassee who may not share the goal of having adequate transit service in this community. I favor regular predictable and small fare increases rather than sudden and drastic fare increases. Regarding Resolution R 2014-09-42, the TDP should prove that the status quo with some annual service improvements is unacceptable for a growing community wanting to remain competitive with other regions around the country. The document's lack of frequent service and the slow addition of bus rapid transit lines are weaknesses that can only be addressed with additional funding that our community must provide. Without additional funding, then future TDPs will be very easy to annually update since there will be no new service. Just two simple words, no change, will be needed to be inserted into the TDP. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matherin. So it was a pleasure having you here. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak at this time concerning any items on our regular budget, our regular agenda? Excuse me. I see no one. Okay, we're going to go to our next presentation. Ruthie Reyes is going to talk to us about our onboard survey results. Ruthie?
Good evening, Board of Directors and Chair. Ruthie Reyes Burkhardt, interim chief operating officer for Hart. And so we're going to be discussing an onboard survey. Our survey was conducted in April of this year, and it was conducted by Tyndale Oliver and Associates. There were 27 questions. They were written by Hart and MPO staff, and they were geared towards marketing and planning and Title VI data. The collectors, the interviewers, if you will, collected the patient responses with tablets for, you know, faster results and quicker data scrubbing. And we had input with the interviewer training. So just a little bit about the demographics of those that participated. Just about an even split of male to female riders, with just 51% of males participated. And an almost equal representation amongst the age groups of riders, with the greater percentage at 23% being 5 to 20 four-year-olds. And the number of those surveyed under the age of 15 didn't really amount to more than 0. something percent, less than 1%, so we didn't include them. And since we conducted the survey in April, we knew we wouldn't have a great number of youth represented in this sampling. Most of our students are in school at that time, and so we would see them more in the summer. And just a little bit about the ethnicity. In 2009, the percentage African-American participants was also 49%, so that hasn't changed from, very much from our last survey. The Hispanic representation increased from 18 to 22% in 2014, and those representing white decreased from 29 to 25%. On income, the greater than 15, 50% of those surveyed indicated less than $15,000 annual income. And 15 to 35 represented the next group at 37%. Employment and occupation, well, we saw 58% of those working between full and part-time workers combined. 14 were not employed, 14% were not employed, 10% students, and 18% other. And of those that were working, 53% were in the service industry, and management and construction, maintenance, and sales comprised the additional workers. Of those with no transit, non-transit bus options, if they had no trip, 19% say if there were no bus option for them, they wouldn't take the trip if they didn't have an option. And interestingly, almost 25% had, 25, 25% had vehicle availability, but only 11% of our participants said they would drive. As far as fare payment, 55% use a one-day unlimited ride or reduced fare card, which allows them any number of transfers on our buses. 25% use a 31-day regular or reduced fare card, and 12% are still paying cash. And trip origin, over half the trips originate at the home. That's not so much a surprise. And 21% are going to work and shopping and various levels of school, recreation, and medical. And even though half the trip starts at home, only 40% return home. They're going back to work or shopping and running other errands.
I hope that's not a reflection of the bus driver himself. I mean, you know.
No, we're out there pretty late. We could get them home if they...
They're not getting lost somewhere, are they?
No, they're not. They may be shopping near home, and maybe it's just a quick walk from there. Of those trips, 58% are just one single bus trips. And that's a pretty significant number when you consider the ease of use of transit and when it's one bus or less trips, folks are more inclined to use the service. And 33% require two bus routes to complete their trip, and 2% need three or more transfers. And then mobility availability, and this was probably interesting for us. We had 37% using a regular cellphone, 51% a combination of smartphone or tablet, 6% use no kind of mobile device. And with the regular cellphone users and smartphone users are now both able to receive information regarding our real-time bus information, as we just launched our text feature, text messaging feature on our One Bus Away just today. So that's great for those regular cellphone users out there. And then uses for the data. So we're going to be using it to market, to target demographics and looking at calibrating the T-Best model, which is the ridership estimation tool. And we'll use that to update our major TDP. We'll use it on APC data, which is our automatic passenger counters for origin-todestination analysis. And of course, planning and marketing will use this to customize services out there to the public.
Thank you, Ruthie.
Thank you.
Any questions of board members about our onboard survey? Doctor Posey?
Just a couple of comments. It was, I was anxious to see the results, and thanks for sharing. I'm assuming there'll be much more analysis to follow. And a couple of things I'd encourage, on some of the demographics, if you can compare them to the general population, that helps give perspective. And you'd referenced in one case some comparisons to the previous survey. I think some more comparisons there would, would be helpful as well. And perhaps some comparisons to the broader industry. There are some, some measures that are more aggregate for the whole industry. It'd be kind of nice to see how we stack up. And the other observation, just in looking at it, is it's a, it's a very, very transit-dependent population. It just really, really is. I mean, it's more so than the industry in general. I mean, the industry tends to be highly transit-dependent across the country, but we're even more so than the norm, which says something about the, the ability of the services to attract choice travelers and the conditions in, in the community parking costs and other things that, that don't make it easy to attract choice travelers.
Any other comment? Mr. Roche?
Yeah, I just had a real quick question, because I noticed one of the questions of the survey was the percent of active military and reserve. Do you happen to know that?
I don't. Let me see.
If not, it can come later. I was just...
We can bring that back to you.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ruthie, I have one question, or two questions, actually. How many, what's the sample size that was used for this survey?
Both in 2009 and 2014, they were in the 2,500 range.
Is that a requirement for Title VI to have a certain number of survey responses? Is that a requirement for Title VI to have a certain number of survey respondents? Or is that just what Tyndale Oliver designed in order for us to do the...
For, for our Title VI compliance, we're required to have statistically valid and reliable survey methods. So depending on the sample size, it's going to fluctuate. So the, the feds don't come down and tell us to talk to 2,500 people. They do require that we do our math right. So that's just where we've landed with the work with Tyndale Oliver.
Yeah, but as part of, as part of the, you know, the requirements, does it say specifically like X percentage of the ridership that you have been doing, or no? Okay.
Well, actually, we, within a few days, we can get the actual language from what they require.
I was just curious.
But it doesn't require the sample size or what percentage of the, just that we have a tool that is reliable, it's validated, and we can repeat the findings if we did it again.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions, Ruthie, on this particular issue on the onboard survey? All right, I think you're up next again, Ruthie.
Okay.
For the key performance indicators.
So this presentation is basically on the operations key performance indicators. And so this is a review from our last meeting, and we have, we are covering the on-time performance in operations, complaints per 100,000, and the mean distance between failures and fixed The on-time performance, the goal for 2014 on-time performance is 72%. And our, in 2014, has been our best year yet. And you'll see that as we've increased along the years. We're averaging at 75.3% year-to-date in 2014. And so we, we're kind of proud of that as our banner year this year. On our complaints per 100,000, and so we have our, I apologize if I may have gone too far. Complaints per 100,000, in the 2014 target is 11.5 per 100,000, and the top two categories of complaints are laid and passed by. And of course, we're looking into those by investigation and mitigation, what we can do to reduce those. And in this fiscal year-to-date, we've averaged 13.43 complaints per 100,000, and we've basically stayed in that area for the last two years and have not met the goal for several years. And in year-to-date, in, I apologize that this says June, it should be July, there were 417 pass-by complaints year-to-date. Forty-six of those complaints, pass-bys in June, and 228 total complaints. And actually, that's July, I apologize. I should have corrected that. And then why are they happening? Pass-by complaints, passenger was not at the stop. And we look at the bus stop range 40 feet prior to and after the bus stop sign. So sometimes folks are not within that range, and they're not being picked up, and they file that as a complaint. They may be seated in the shelter, standing near, but not at the bus stop. And of course, there's a little bit of confusion sometimes between the Metro Rapid and the route two stops, whether or not they can catch either bus at the different stations. In comparison to the ridership, the failure to, you know, the failure to pick up complaints compared to ridership, if you, if you looked at the Route 34, there were six complaints of failure to pick up in comparison to just about 70,000 trips. And that, 70,000 ridership. So that's quite a bit of ridership for that few number of complaints. And when you're looking at it from that perspective, you know, it doesn't seem as great a number when you look at the ridership compared to that number. The second most common complaint was the late complaints. There were 261 complaints year-to-date of late, seven in July. This number went down significantly from August. Now, we can speculate that with school-out, traffic is lighter in the summer, and maybe our buses were running on time. Our on-time performance was better, so perhaps late on-time performance have a correlation there. And then, of course, when you look at this chart, it looks very skewed, because there's one complaint per route shown, seven complaints total, and ridership goes anywhere from the route, you know, 10,000 to 50,000 range. Mean distance between failures with our goal of greater than or equal to 6,800 miles between failures on our routes, we're approximately 360 miles below the target of 6,800 in fiscal year 14. And so we're ranging at 6,640 is fiscal year-to-date. And of course, we're, we're looking into those things, and we deter, we've looked at and found the coolant, engines, transmissions, and of course, many of those are due for replacement. And part of our plan is for FY15 is de-aging on purpose. And I apologize, I'll go back to that. Aging on purpose. And so what are we doing? We have a major fleet renovation for the FY15 with 47 engines, 47 transmissions, and FY15 will be replaced. So we'll see a little bit assistance for our fleet in addition to the 22 replacement vehicles, CNG, that are coming onboard next year, additional maintenance, staff, mechanics, and such to help us through that process. And then the agency KPIs. And so what you have here is the comparison of 2014's current target and the 2015 target. And for reference, ridership, safety, and finance targets will remain the same as proposed for FY15. The efficiency gross cost per revenue mile target for 2015 is raised by 2%. And the quality of service changes to the target goes reducing ma, a mean distance between failure to 6,600 and increasing the complaints to 13 complaints per 100,000. And then on-time performance, well, we're looking to raise the bar, increasing that to 74% from 72%. And so our recommendations is to implement a customer satisfaction program, looking at a focus group, of course, staff to evaluate those KPIs on a quarterly basis, perhaps even implement some, some form of survey on a quarterly basis that we can go back out on a quarterly basis to the customer with the same set of questions and asking, "How are we doing?" And if you will, rate us, and looking at how we can improve the service. And then looking at other measures such as social media, website responsiveness, in terms of how fast we respond back to our customers.
Any questions for Ruthie? Go ahead.
Just kind of an observation. The issue of complaints is, it's kind of an interesting one, because it cuts both ways. You want feedback from your customers. And to the extent that some of the complaints deal with things like was indicated on the onboard survey where they want more and better service, you know, they, they might say that repeatedly, and there's a finite amount that can be done. Other things, obviously, there's, there's appropriate responses. The, the other kind of issue is now with the availability of cellphones and, you know, and tablets, the, the ability to complain is much more readily available than was historically the case. So as you're sitting at the stop frustrated, you can call and complain, or your county commissioner. Yes, yes. So I, I think all of the kind of customer satisfaction needs to be, and, and I think you're digging into the kind of the specifics is helpful. But, you know, feedback is good, obviously, to the extent that it's a legitimate complaint and somebody did something wrong, it needs to be fixed. If it's aspirational, you know, we need to log it and keep track of it. But, so anyway, I just, just some observations on it. I do think people need to be careful, and, and higher numbers aren't necessarily bad. It kind of depends on the specifics and the context.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vance?
Hi, Ruthie.
Okay.
In regards to the agency KPIs, have we, do we have a study, or do we monitor what other agencies are using for their KPIs?
Yes, thank you for that question. Is, we do this annually, but specifically this year, we had several board members after the August 4th board meeting say, "How are our friends and neighbors doing?" And Ruthie is in a seminar right now with the COOs from Jacksonville and Orlando, so we figured, what a great opportunity to find out how they're doing, except they haven't really answered the question. So this is one of those interesting things. We can take the aggregate data, which is available in the National Transit Database, and get some pretty basic information. So cost per passenger, total ridership by system mode, but on-time performance, and even miles between major failures, because they define major failures a little differently than we do. We get a different answer from our friends depending on when they call them. PSTA, we also deal closely with them. They adopt some vision principles that don't have numbers associated with them. So when we've asked PSTA, they say, "Well, we'd like to do XYZ." So the answer is, yes, we can ask them, and we get kiwi fruit to our apples. So the, so the challenge is how to, you know, how do you benchmark yourself to see that you're doing okay for the industry, but said something which is realistic for your property? And we think from our customer satisfaction program that we'll be bringing back to you, trying to find something, again, a little different than just complaints. It will be able to say that at a minimum, what we're doing, this is what folks think of it, and they're happy, or they're not, and here's how we're going to move them toward happy. It's probably the best that we can get to.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment on that. FDOT produces a transit handbook that's got some performance for all of the transit properties in Florida in it. But, but Catherine's absolutely correct that there's certain measures that agencies don't just define the exact same way. The cost ones, the service supply ones tend to be stable and comparable across context, but some of the, there's some with some judgment, things like complaints and lateness, and, and even incidents, there's historically been a, a challenge getting consistent measures. But the financial and basic cost measures are comparable across properties.
Commissioner Murrow?
Thank you. I just want to ask a quick question. Do we have that little slogan on the back of the bus that says, "Tell me how I'm driving"?
We can add it? We do not, but we, we have the website plastered in numerous locations on the bus, and as Ruthie's noting, people definitely send an email, hopefully not while they're driving, but we hear a lot from folks.
Okay, so, and the other question was, what exactly is on the bus that someone can respond to if they have a customer service issue?
The buses all, the buses and vans all have gohart.org on the back of the vehicle, which is typically...
Inside. I'm talking inside.
Oh, on the inside. On the inside, we have a couple of different internal pieces that include contact information. It's been several years since we ran one specifically on the inside, but we can see the last time we ran one, what that looked like, available space, and put something together that way.
Or, I mean, you know, it's like, do I like, do you like the ride today or something, and put a phone number? I think we need to be, look at something inside the bus that can be, have some information for people to contact. Thank you.
Ruthie? Anyone else? Any comments? I'm not going to say why you mentioned that, but, thank you, Ruthie. No other questions for Ruthie?
Thank you.
That's our last presentation. We have several action items. The Finance Governance and Administration Committee met on August 18th, and they recommend approval of the following action items to our board. There are action items to A through E. I would entertain a motion to, I have a motion to approve with a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? No? Okay, thank you. Next part of our agenda, my report on policy leadership group. There's two things. One, we did have a policy leadership group in the interim from the, our last meeting, and we had had a discussion, I was told by our board, to go meet with Mike Merrill, with our CEO and our attorney, to talk about governance issues. Between the time that we made that motion and passed, and the time that we had a chance to meet, there was a policy leadership group meeting in which Mr. Merrill had said they had taken off all the governance issues off the board. Now, and we did meet with him, we did talk to him a little bit. I think that his viewpoint is that, you know, we're going to find out what direction PLG is going to take before they start talking anymore about, about governance. I was glad to hear that. I think that right now, we need to concentrate on what it is that we really want to try and do as a community, and then we can concentrate on how that, how that's going to change, if any change is going to come before HART. There was some comment, and I had heard from a member of the public earlier today, about the selection of those members that are not, that are not part of the public but are elected officials. And I made a comment, and I have said this previously publicly, that, you know, any of the signatories to our charter can make a decision as to who's going to be on the board after those, those appointments are up. There, there is no, we have no say-so in that, and the County Commission, or the City Council of Tampa, or Temple Terrace will make a decision as to who's going to be serving on their board. I will say, though, that I think that citizen involvement and citizen members are important. I, I've always felt that way, and if you look at the original charter for HART, one of the signatories, and you'll remember this name, is Larry Stagg. And Larry Stagg not only served this board, but then was eventually the, the head of the, the Board of Education for the State of Florida, and the University Board, and served admirably in all of the positions that he ever served in. So citizen participation at this level, I think, is important, but that's not my decision to make, either from the mayor's perspective or from County Commission. That's just a, an opinion of my point. We have our CEOs report, our interim CEOs report. Ma'am, if you could go ahead?
Thank you.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You have a question? I apologize. Go ahead.
So the next meeting of the PLG, I understand, is going to be in December?
I believe so. I, I don't know the exact frame. I think so, yeah.
And this is, I'm kind of going to direct to the county commissioners, because there's four county, or now there's three county citizen appointees. Is there a, do you know what's going to happen? Are the, you know, are, any, any talk when there might be citizen appointees approved? I'm just wondering, because there's a few of us up in the air. Because I think three, four expire at the end of October.
I can help you. I might be able to. There has not been a...
I, I know, I was just going to make a comment that, you know, since you are, you're, this is a public hearing, but it's not, I mean, if you don't feel comfortable answering the question, you don't have to.
No, no, it's fine. You know, we're in elections right now, and we actually have a new board member coming on. We have one other election coming up, and generally, we wait to make the appointments after the next election. So it will be after November 2nd?
Fourth.
Fourth. And then we'll do all those then. And that's, that, as I've noticed, has been more or less the policy during the election years.
And I know, because I know the charter says that without a vacancy, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, then, then we would continue in that, in that position. But I noticed also that there was a little bit of question at the last meeting that I wasn't here at, I read the minutes, that there was a question as to vacancy. And I don't know if this should be new business or whatever, but, you know, I was going to bring up, do we have a policy for succession when a member resigns? Because I think there was some questions about that last time.
I'm going to defer to our legal counsel on that, because we've talked quite a bit about our charter and what it means whenever someone resigns, or if someone can be removed. We've, we've had a lot of different discussions. Mr. Smith, if you don't mind?
Yes, when someone resigns, the appointing authority for that person designates the successor.
Does, is it an unfulfilled term, or is it a, a brand-new term?
It is for the balance of the term that's being fulfilled.
Okay. Did that, did that answer your question?
It did, but it, it would be nice to have a policy at some point, I mean, you know, to, to clarify, because there was some questions about the timing. There's a 20-day, a 10-day, and another 10 where the governor can appoint. It, it just would be nice to kind of flesh out, so there's never any questions, you know, in the future.
Well, you know, I, I would entertain a motion that we have our, our attorney come back with whether or not it's charter territory, or if it's procedural territory that we can handle without having to open up the agreements between the three entities, so, unless you already know that answer.
Now, as you may recall, the issue was, when is in fact a position vacant? When in fact is the fulfilling authority notified? Because the time periods begin to run, but they begin to run from a date that wasn't clearly identified. So I think it would be appropriate for this board to adopt a policy that more clearly identifies those dates, and also the requirements of this board to notify the appointing agency so that they have an... so that they have an opportunity to exercise their authority to appoint someone.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion then that we look into a policy to define those. I mean, at the minimum, that's within our purview.
Okay.
You know, that procedure, who gets notified.
Okay. Do I have a second to that motion? Okay, I have a second. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Thank you, Mr. Roche. Mr. Bergen?
If I could redirect back to Commissioner Murman for just a moment. If I understood correctly what you described there a moment ago, the commission would wait until, as I recall, it's usually the December or late November meeting following the election to make decisions. But usually, at least as I recall, and correct, this is where I'm looking for clarification, as I recall, that point of decision is about appointing commission members out to various committees. So that presumptively would assume then that any Hart board positions would then be allocated to commissioners? Or what?
Well, I mean, at every meeting, we make appointments. I mean, our chairman can answer this, but we would wait till after elections and then we would make other appointments after that, at subsequent meetings, our meeting in November.
And I can't speak for the administrator or the board, but it's my sense, and only my sense, that what we would be looking at is that there would be no change in the composition, at least until after the policy leadership group is recorded back, at which point you're going to have this interim period, which could very well mean, could, that the current members would have the opportunity to be reappointed and not have commissioners take those seats until after a lot of conversation, which means it could be another year. It could be they could make an appointment and say, "An appointment for a year." I think they, I'm not sure, I know we're not going to run into this mistake of going past the appointment period, which would open up the door for what we were just discussing with legal. So I would think the board might well take it up before November. What Commissioner Murman is saying is correct. In the November period, we will look at all of our boards. But I think that this, I think what you're going to likely see is a standard, as we've done, so that the existing members would have the, every opportunity to be reappointed.
Okay. Mr. Bregner, I don't know if you would be for Ms. Davenport, but I'll take you, go ahead.
I had a conversation with our county attorney, and he says that we don't, he says that the term expires and the board chooses not to act, it's their prerogative, and those current appointees would stay on there until the board decides they're going to or not appoint. So it's kind of like when the governor decides, you know, if their appointment expires and he hasn't made a decision, that current board member stays on there until decisions made.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Davenport, or you want him to go? Go ahead, Dr. Polzin.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Normally, it has been the December meeting, as I recall. And logically, you would want the new board to appoint you in the sense of having ownership in the appointment. So it's logical to have the election completed and the board organized. I don't think, Mark, that you'd have the opportunity under existing policy to do one-year terms. I mean, I think it calls for three-year terms in spite of the fact that you do one-year terms for commissioners typically. And I mean, that's another issue. The other thing I would suggest, and I don't know how it would be changed, but right now, you have all of the citizens reps up simultaneously. And I think for just the health of the board, and to give the commission frankly, an opportunity to interject a new perspective on an annual basis, I think it might be wise to have those, you know, one-per-year kind of terms as opposed to all simultaneously, so that you could have a chance each year to reflect on it.
Okay. Ms. Davenport? Okay.
Polzin, are you suggesting staggered terms or are you suggesting one-year terms?
No, I'm suggesting staggered terms. You might have to do shorter period terms to get them staggered.
You realize to do that, we've got to change the child.
I understand that. I recognize there's a challenge in doing that. I'm just saying that I think it would be ultimately some benefit in doing that.
Okay. Did you have anything else, Ms. Davenport?
Yes, I wanted to come back to the last policy group meeting, and perhaps even it spills over into the meeting that you and Ms. Egan and our attorney had with your counterparts over in the county. What is actually going out to the public for public hearing? For public commentary, not public hearing?
Are you talking about-
Is our TDP going out along with the county's proposal on roads? Is part of the TDP going out? What is actually going out to the public? Because from what I've read, I can't understand it.
I will venture to say, based on what I've seen, is that it is, it's an amalgam of a lot of different things, including our TDP, some of the things that we've had from MPO, our MPO plans. And there's a lot of different things in there. It's a pretty lengthy list of different projects. So if you're asking, what are they going to do? We made a decision at the last PLG meeting to engage someone to go out to the public to talk about all these plans. If I, and my friends from the PLG, if I'm saying this correct, if I'm not, please correct me, that we're trying to engage to get someone to publicly talk about these projects and get public input.
Well, I understood that. I just don't understand what part of the adopted HART TDP is going out to the public along with whatever the county-
I'll defer to Ms. Egan then in terms of that specifically.
Well, that's my first question. And then I have a second question. In this meeting that you had with the county administrator, did we get a response on the board's request, which went out, I think, two months ago? Or at least six weeks ago? Did we get a response to the board's request for helping us fund a planning effort here? I believe that was a half-million-dollar request. It probably needs an answer, especially since we're in budget time.
No, we did not discuss it at that particular meeting, if I'm correct?
We did not. We received no response from the county.
Okay.
We received a response from the MPO, which we sent out as part of the weekly update. But we've received no response from the county.
Well, I wonder if we could send the letter again to the county administrator and ask for a response.
I think if that's a motion to resend, we can get a second for that and go forward from there.
Well, they're in their budget hearings, we're in our budget hearings. If that money is going to be appropriated for HART this year, then the county commission needs to take a position on it, and they need to take a position before the second public hearing.
Right. Well, I would suggest that if that's a motion, get a second-
I think we'd like to hear from the county administrator.
Right. Well, I think that, before we go on, Commissioner Murman? Yeah, you know, it's kind of hard for us to battle as to what the next, what's going to happen in the budget cycle for the county commission. You are correct that we did send that letter probably about four and a half, five weeks ago, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And as Ms. Egan said, we haven't gotten an answer yet. I think that it is proper, if you wanted to make that motion and get a second, we approve it, to reiterate to the county administrator to get an answer as to whether or not that's going to be funded, that $500,000 planning.
And it's not, I don't intend to put you or your colleagues on the spot, Commissioner, because you all supported that request. I think we need an answer from the administrators.
Okay, well, if that's a motion, we'll entertain that motion. And if there's a second-
Could we please double back with him and ask for a-
Sure. I'm not sure if we necessarily have to do a motion, Mr. Smith, but do you think it's important that it have the weight of the board?
Can I please address this?
Okay, hang on just a second. Let me just get the, let me get the procedure right first before we go forward. Go ahead.
It would not be inappropriate for you to follow up, but if the board wants to go on record indicating it would like to be heard, then that's appropriate also.
Okay. Ms. Murman, I apologize, I just wanted to get everything out of the way here.
Well, I probably could have cleared it up five minutes ago. Anyway, you know, our millage was approved at the end of July. Our millage is approved. And when we approve our millage, we, if we add anything to the budget, we have to take it from another area. So that's kind of like standard practice. We don't add any new requests to the budget generally. But I don't think we need to make a motion. I'm happy to follow up with the administrator, Ms., our chairman, Sharp, will, happy to do that. And I think we can take care of it and get an answer back to someone pretty quickly. I don't know at this point, because we have consultants trying to put a plan together. We have a lot going on behind the scenes right now. So I think, let's just have him get back to Catherine and we'll go from there.
Good. I don't care who produces it, I just want to hear an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
And to answer the first-
Any other questions about, are you going to refer back to?
And to answer your first question, Ms. Davenport, the information from the TDP is included in there. Now, tonight, the board did approve on the consent agenda, the updated TDP. So first thing tomorrow morning, we'll be getting those revised numbers over to the county so that the status quo and vision plan numbers they include continue to match the document. But Hart's TDP is included in their comprehensive mobility proposal, which is slated to start public involvement, I believe, at some point this month. Our TDP is in there.
Well, and I think we all need to know that, because people in the public are going to ask us what we think as that public information project moves forward. And I think we need to know, first of all, what's in it, so that we can respond as far as the projects of HART go. The projects from the county road department, I don't consider myself knowledgeable about that, so I wouldn't try to respond to people. But I get a lot of questions, not as many as you get, but I get a lot of questions on what is it that's being proposed? Well, I think I need to know, and I especially need to know if all of our projects are in there.
Thank you, Ms. Davenport. Now for your report, Ms. Egan?
Thank you.
Thank you. We had listed in the agenda, short discussion. We generate an awful lot of paper for our board packets, both in producing the documentation here and also getting documentation out ahead of time. Staff is beginning the process of speaking with our peer agencies, regionally but also around the country, on their decision process of deciding to go to electronic or paperless meetings. We're finding that other agencies have done cost-benefit analyses and said, "We're spending this much in staff time to deliver packets and this much in paper and production costs." So we'll be keeping you posted once we have those numbers for Hart's budget put together. But we will be asking you for your opinion on us making the entire packet available electronically for board members who already have tablets or mobile devices where you are comfortable receiving that. We can send you that link ahead of time and make sure you have that. For those of you who would prefer to stick with a paperless copy, we will also be interested in it. We'll paper copy, I apologize. I'm a big scribbler, I like my paper copy. I know that's not very progressive, but that's where we are. So we'll be- So we'll be looking for your feedback then on the different ways to get this information to you. And again, we will be doing some math on this, so it's not just, hey, we've got some older tablets we can repurpose, but what's a good business decision? Two separate follow-up items, as you're aware, Hart goes through the process every year of locking in our fuel costs. And Jeff hit, this is an overview in the budget presentation. We locked in an extremely favorable rate. Mr. Burns, do, would you or Mr. Seward care to share that rate? For our diesel? At the same time, Jim and Lynn.
I had all these numbers going through my head and I just, so, we locked 290, what is that? 297. 297 per gallon, we locked, which is lower than our peer agencies who are off the same contract. We budgeted $3 per gallon, so as long as we stay right along our usage, we will save some money next year. If we adhere to the cost that the other agencies across the state secure their prices for, we would need another $500 and some thousand dollars added to our budget. So we were able to save, based on our peers, compared to them, over $500,000 by locking early for the next year on behalf of our procurement department. So, thanks.
For the hard work, procurement, thank you very much. And just a point to bear in mind, after salaries and benefits, fuel is our top expense. It's our third biggest expense, so this is no small feat, thank you very much. Jeff had also mentioned in his presentation, Tibarta has indicated their support on our regional Fairbox working group project. Their support at this point consists of making it easier to integrate this fair information in their one-call, one-click website that Tibarta's pulled together, sort of a clearinghouse for all transit information. And Jeff, correct me where I'm wrong, but by them opening up our ability, their ability to use that website, it's either providing us additional funding for the interface or saving us from spending some money? How does this work?
Yes, I'm working on an agreement right now to make available $257,000 from the one-call, one-click. And adding that to the overall project, that is money that doesn't have to come out of the state funding or from the local agencies, and will be a regional portal for all eight agencies within Tibarta District 7 and District 1. So we are working with Tibarta, and they are a good partner on this project.
Who's budget, who's money is it?
It's the Tibarta's project, which is their one-call, one-click. I'm not certain-
It's federally funded.
It's federally funded?
Who's money?
Feds.
And that's it?
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Mr. Smith, anything from the general counsel's chair?
Yeah, very little. I was going to ask the board to direct me to address the departing member policy, but we've already done that. And the other thing I was going to tell you is we are developing, Marco primarily at this point, but I'm going to go through it with him, are developing a new ethics policy that we will be bringing to the board. And that's all.
Thank you. Okay. We have, of course, our committee reports that we usually have, they're in your material. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to come before this board to make any comments about this meeting or anything else about Hart? I see no one. Any older new business from our members? Okay, none? Will be, oh, I apologize, Mr. Sharp?
Thanks, staff, for the hard work. And the, that's from the, our CEO, to the frontline troops. I think you all have done a phenomenal job in challenging, in a challenging environment, and I appreciate the hard work. I also want to say to Ms. Egan, I deeply appreciate the fact that on things like Wi-Fi, which you're moving forward on, and many other elements, you're moving forward hard. With these numbers, looking at the demographics, you know, we're capturing 4% of people who earn $50,000 and above. But 84% of our riders approximately work and/or are students. And then these numbers here that jump out the page, you pass ridership, dramatic rise over the past few years, 18 to 20%. What that tells me is, A, skate to where the puck's going. I think you're going to see more people who have the option of deciding, picking Hart, but they're going to want to use their app and other things. And so I thank you for, you know, pushing hard in that direction. I wish we could push harder, faster, but I know you're going as hard and fast as you can, and I think we have a tremendous opportunity. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or older new business? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.